Georgetown City Council meeting, August 18, 2022 is now called order. HK, you ladies in here, please?
Father, we come to you tonight, thank you for this beautiful day, beautiful weather, and the privilege of showing the people of the city of Jamestown. We pray that all that is said and done tonight will be in your will. We give a strength and courage to do the right thing. Be with our country, its leadership. The Father would trust and turn it over to you to bring us through these problems that are facing us as a nation. Be with our mayor and the city councils, they serve us tonight in Jesus' name.
Amen.
..........................................
Well, the first thing we have on the agenda is, has to do with Jack Hudson and building and lot that he owns here in Jamestown. And this is just Jack come to the bank and talked to me about it and just wanted to know if the council was interested, the building that is located right behind People's Cafe. That building back there and lot?
Oh, okay, yeah. Right there, behind that hill place?
Oh, right behind the cafe. There's not a cafe?
She built it on the right and tore up the hill behind the cafe, the building down the road.
Yes, same place, tiny lot.
I don't think the lot's much bigger than the building, is it?
No, no, it's small.
I don't know, and he didn't know how big the lot was, but he's just wanting to sell it and wanted to know if we'd be interested in buying it. I told him we'd have to talk about it, discuss it. I asked him a price, he told me a price, which is $20,000. So, that's just something, if you all want to think about that, or if you want to, just something that we, I told you we would discuss, so. Anybody have any comments or anything about that now? It's just something you want to think about? Anybody have any comments on that about?
How, I mean, it's been vacant, how long?
Well, the building is actually, I think Betty Moody bought it when she bought the cafe, because she used it to store stuff in. So, when she sold the cafe and then he got the building. I think it's just been used more or less for a storage building. But the only reason I, does that lot connect to the property we just bought back there?
It would, I think it joins that property.
That was my only thoughts about, you know?
Did they have three there?
I think, I think there was something, I think it was something on the right away, something.
Yeah. Yeah. You see a gate there? Went right in behind them. Yeah. Goed all the way across there. I forgot that. There it is, true.
Been a long time since that's been up there.
It has, I forgot about it. They did, it used to be, I don't know if it's right away a lot, but there did used to be a road across there.
So, is it something we want to even think about? Do we want to look at the building? Do we want to get kind of a size of a lot to see if there's use there for us with it being close? Is it something we want to just kind of check into?
Is there anything that we need to build or, I mean, we need a building? Because if we're just buying it for the lot, it seems to me like that would be a lot to pay for it and then have to tear the building down just to get the lot. And it's, now I know it's not very good lot.
Any use for it that was in the zoo?
I can't think of anything, I mean.
Want to look at it, think about it, or anybody want to?
I don't know, any real use for it?
I'll make multiple tables for the next meeting, so we all have a chance to go by there and look at it and kind of check it out, see if any of the law be a lot of them.
Okay, can I motion by Tony to table it? State of Aida on favor?
Yes.
Being opposed. Okay, we'll table that, maybe go look at the building, check the lot size.
Pull the PBA in from that one.
See if we have any interest in it.
I do know the building has electric in it though, because they barely kept freezers.
Yes.
One time, one time there was a little store back there, years and years ago.
Did they and Bernard have a shoe repair place there years ago? Y'all two done it before?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a pup.
I think they did.
I can't remember, it must have been a store, I don't remember what it was.
He had a shoe repair store there years and years ago.
Okay, well, we'll check on that. Tyler, if you want to pull it up and maybe get something from PBA? And then maybe I'll even see if Jack has a key or something, maybe want to go look at it and see if we have any use for it or the lots with them being the close, so we can make a decision on that. Okay, Jeff Wonders is here with the fire department. I think he wants to talk to us about South Russell Fire Department. Thank you.
As most of you all know, the rumor, South Russell, you, South Russell can no longer meet the state requirement for the amount of people that's required. What they are asking is to merge with Jamestown. Jamestown would take over everything. The only thing that we would not own is the building. HK and I had discussed this, the building is road up, that if it ever closes, it goes back to the original landowner. But as long as it's used as a fire station, it stays open and blowing. This is the financial statement that he had. Water bill, of course, dual county telephone, that was $114 a month, they have turned that off, that was for their internet service and stuff like that. He said they had no use for it. Average electric bill's about $60 a month. Gas for the heat ran just a little over $700 and they still have some. Fuel, fuel for the trucks was $1,100 a year, and there's no way to pinpoint this because you never know the amount of runs that they have and everything. Insurance runs just over $8,200, that's for the trucks and the buildings. And then on to Roger Dale and I already discussed, that the amount of trucks that they have, the amount of equipment they have, some trucks would be put up on the auction lot, just not the first day, but would be coming, that they would be sold. And then the phone service, what we call phone services, we get our calls over the phone, runs $305 and it's up for renewal right now. All their trucks, equipment is paid for. There's no outstanding bills there. No matter what happens, Jamestown's going to inherit this district. We are going to inherit all the runs and everything down there. Tony can remember this, we did it when he was chief. And I can tell you, it's a long haul down the Rock House. But the equipment that I have looked at, the, two of their engines, one's carries 1,000 gallons of water, four door, good shape, another one's 1,500 gallons, real good shape, and then they have a mini pumper. Their tankers are not that good of shape, and no brush truck that they have is not that good of shape. So, we're looking at about three trucks right there that we're going to end up probably disposing of. The only thing, yes, this is going to be an added burden on the city. I've talked to Gary Robertson. The county gives South Russell $10,000 a year, that will remain, it goes to Jamestown. Gary said that will stay on at all time. Been working with the state for our state aid, $10,500 that we get, South Russell gets that also, if we can get all the paperwork pushed through and everything, we will get that. The House bill voted this year, and since we, it just entered, that's an all, that's a for everything. $10,500 from the state every year, as long as that station is open. If two years down the line we say, oh, this is not working, that $10,500 would cease. Jamestown would still get their 10, their money. The county money can be used for just whatever we need. The state money, there is limits that we, that we have to spend certain things on. Some can go for electric, some can go for things.
Hey, Jeff, I have just a question there. I'm assuming that the $10,000 that comes from the county is what I'm seeing under February over here, that $10,000, but I'm not seeing anything on there for $10,500.
They have not received their state aid this year.
Not this year.
Because they can't keep the quota, and if we merge, our firefighters become theirs.
Because we got enough.
We have enough. It also helps our quota and bring, and which helps our ISO rating, because they're down, you're supposed to have 12 in one chief, they're five in one chief. And it's, it's.
There's no.
There's no, there's no people down, well, there's people down there, but.
If you merge, do they consider that one, one firehouse and just get one $10,500?
Two firehouses.
Two firehouse, because we're merging with South Russell, we'll get the state aid, $10,500, if we get all the paperwork pushed through. We get that every year, just like Jamestown Fire Department gets that. They changed that, it was supposed to be for three years, they changed it this past summer, it's forever. So, we'll get, we'll get that money.
As long as it's a station.
Long as it's a station, if, if we just, if you all said, this is too big of a burden, a year down the road, then we, we go in, we close the door.
Okay, going back to what Regina said there, about the $10,500 not being on here, did they not get it for this fiscal year because we didn't have enough people?
We're, yeah, but we can, Larry Adams and the other people there with the state board, they said, we move these people from here to here, here to here, and they can get it.
Back pay for the year they didn't get to?
Yes, and that's, that's the thing, and that's, that's a big, big thing, because if, if they don't approve it and let us have that, that's $10,500 we're going to miss out on, and, and I know that that's probably, probably a deal breaker right there. But either way, we're going, we're going to inherit this, and our fuel won't go up $1,100, but we will see an increase. We won't see that big, because anything that they have that's big right now, we're down there. Structure fires, things like that, we, we're down there.
And we get their subscription fees too?
We get everything. They have not taken.
How much do they get in subscription fees? I see that on the jack.
Fees for service.
Last year they did $1,500. This year they haven't taken any in because they didn't want to have to try to send them back. They have a balance right now of just over $4,100 in the bank, so that'll take care of the phone, the phone service until we switch it over, put everything on.
So, regardless, regardless, you all will be going down there if you don't.
If that station closes, we'll, we'll inherit that back, that goes back.
That was Jamestown backed forced South Russell to me lie, that was Jamestown's coverage down there anyway, and rest, when South Russell came into existence, then we kind of split the territory with them.
So, but us not doing this, we would actually just be affecting our finances out of this part?
What would affect would be our fuel bill, wear and tear on the trucks, but then we still get their, we still get their money from the subscriptions, that'll still come to us.
We're not using their building at that point, right? Or are we still going to, because the biggest expense I see here is that for the insurance, $8,245.
Well, that's trucks.
$31,000 for vehicle maintenance repairs.
Oh, that's, they paid off their last truck this year.
But we would still have to use their building, because then it would be the point of benuke if they didn't have the trucks there at that location to service a fire that was at that end of the county. Which was a problem before South Russell came in.
If you don't have another station.
Yeah.
And, and that also helps those people that live down there.
Exactly.
Because that puts in within, for a lot of them.
A mileage for their insurance.
The violence rate is for their insurance.
It's imperative we keep that.
Well, I don't see how, I mean, we're going to be doing it anyway, so why would we not get the state funds and the county funds for it to offset, because we're going to be doing, the dummy expense I see different is going to be made.
And on the insurance.
Chief then. Roger Dale coffee.
I assume that.
We've, we've already worked all that out, we've, we've sat down, Roger Dale will be the assistant chief of that station. That'll be over everything. So, we need to work it through, talk to all their guys.
So, good to the government. For sure money, you can hear $20,500.
Yeah, for sure, as long as we get the thing through the state.
Okay, as long as you get that.
Yes, like Gary said, the $10,000 that comes from the county, that will continue to go and it will come, it will come to Jamestown because that station's open.
This is something we need to act on immediately, though?
We, we probably need to get it done in the next couple, three weeks. It doesn't, heck, be a decision made this night.
And on insurance, if the C takes over that, then I don't know who there, they have their insurance through, but theirs would have to be switched over, I guess, to be under our policy.
Yes. I know they don't have it with McKinney and Blair, I do know that.
And Aaron's doing league siege, right? KLC?
No, we're McKinney and Blair. And for property casualty, still KLC with them. Would you feel like this needs to be done?
It'd be, it'd be great if we could do this, because we get to keep that building and help put the trucks down there, and we still have some guys that are down there, so they'll be able to respond, and then we'll leave from our station and go down there. And also, Phil Anderson and some of the other, I told them, I said, now, we take off to go all the way down there, we've still got to leave about three people in the city limits. Those guys have to stay at the station, that we cannot send everybody down there. We've come up with a really good mutual aid with Russell Springs right now. They listen, and if they hear us going down there to help South Russell on a structure fire, or know that we're, like the other day, we were down at the marina for about three hours on an electrical fire, Russell Springs goes to their station, some of their guys sit in the station, and they, they're covering our area. I think it's been about a month, Russell Springs actually followed roadbell fire over McKinney Lane for us. We had one truck over there, they sent another truck up, because we were down Happens Landing for a helicopter.
Well, it's like this, if we don't do this, that building's going to close, Jamestown is still going to inherit that part of the county that we're going to have to provide fire protection to. Those people down there, their insurance rates are going to go up, because they're going to be far from the station at that point.
Just as long as we can handle the extra burden and expense, I mean.
Well, I'm.
The February, the $27,000, how much of that was that vehicle?
That was, from what I understand, Tyler, and I, and I'm hoping, I'm trying to remember what it was, that was the total, the last payoff on that vehicle.
That was all of it?
That was all of it.
That, that's, that's not reoccurring?
No.
So, that knocks your, that knocks your expenses down to $20,000.
So, it pays for itself.
And then you'd have 10, 10 to the county, 10 pot from.
State, yeah, and then subscription fees.
I do too. That end of the county deserves to know that that's there, they deserve the break on their insurance?
Yes, we do.
Absolutely, absolutely. Wear my heart on my shoulder on this, I'm completely for this.
I've received phone calls for the past two weeks, because they knew.
If the, if this is right, we should, we should, the only problem will be, if this is right money wise, it should, it should wash.
Exactly.
The only problem I see, but we're, we're doing it anyway, it's not going to matter. But insurance wise, it's, I guess, I was thinking like taking it over, not merging. Insurance wise, on, on property casualty, all that, it's going to come to us. What about if somebody gets hurt? But, but if we're taking it over anyway, it's not going to matter.
We're going to be the ones doing the runs.
We're going to be down.
Well, the State Fire Commission provides, or.
Thank you, Tony, I was trying to think of it too.
That doesn't cost the city anything, you know, that's, that's all covered by the State Fire Commission.
Yeah. The building's in good shape down there. Tony, can you remember when it was built?
No, but it would have been in the 80s, late 80s.
Late 80s.
Late 80s, early 90s.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was 89, actually.
That's where we had to get the money, we have to make sure we didn't make worse.
That's, that's. Roger Dale and I'll start on the state aid money tomorrow. If you're going, or when you all make the decision, we'll start on, on the state aid money.
Yeah, I mean, you know, those people down there, their insurance is going to go through the roof, it's going to automatically be a class 10.
If, if, if you can handle it okay, and Tyler seems to think, you know, I mean, I'm, 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 I'll make the motion, and if it goes haywire, y'all hang me.
Well, with the stipulation that the state aid carries over and everything, that, I want to make that clear, we want to make sure that that goes through, because Tony understands that paperwork on that.
But that's for sure, if it goes, if that's $20,500.
For sure money. $10,500 from the state and $10,000 from the county.
Fiscal code.
That's automatic.
Doesn't even count the subscription.
That doesn't count the subscriptions.
Do you know how much that was?
They took in 1,500 last year, but they haven't been trying to bring any in this year because of their.
And that's insurance billing to non-subscribers here.
That's what we're, we're, got to work on, and we've got to work on that with Jamestown on our side.
I would think too, that that insurance would go down a little bit combined with other insurance that we already have.
That's, that's what I'm hoping, that if we switch the, the trucks over to McKinney and Blair, that that'll change and then save the bill.
Right. I would think usually if you've got more than one thing, it kind of reduces that. Okay.
I make a motion that we merge that fire department into ours, I guess.
I second. As long as the state money.
As long as the money, the state aid money and the county continues to put their force and their $10,000 a year. That, that makes pretty much wash, I believe, I believe that, or, I think it would be a minimal cost to us, and we're going to have to cover it anyway, so I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and do that.
Yeah. Got a motion, but Tony, I need a second?
I second.
All favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Jeff, thanks for all the work on that too.
Yes, keep me updated on that, definitely, I know when, when we switch all the dentures, where they'll probably come down and look at everything.
Yes, sir, I'll take care, I'll take care of that, I'll call Roger Dale, we'll set up an appointment.
All right.
And he can take care. Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Next thing we have on the agenda is the discussion of the KSR show in Jamestown. KSR Kentucky Sports Radio. This is just something that's been brought up different times from different people that have asked about, worried about getting KSR to come to Jamestown, maybe in Beck Park, setting up a day in Jamestown and doing the show. So, I contacted KSR to get some information. The lady called Friday was the day, Friday, Debbie and Tyler came up and we listened on a Zoom call, got all the information we could, just to see. I'll tell you what we found out, see if there's any interest there, and if there is, then we'll talk about it. They, they have one show left this year, that's September the 9th, the rest of the shows will go into January and February. They do a three hour show, they do two to three days promotion before the show, and then they do promotions after the show. It goes out over 59 podcasts, which goes into all different parts of the state, 59 different live podcasts. But they charge, they do a $3,000 sponsorship fee, 3,500 advertising. What she's telling us is that what a lot of people do is if you kind of want to look at doing this show, you can footy yourself, you can do all kinds of sponsorships about the city, about bringing tourism, to bring whatever into Jamestown, just to try to promote different things going on in Jamestown. Or you can go out and get sponsors, just for it's good safe, you want to get with the, the tourism center, to see if they're interested in doing live broadcasts on their show, promoting tourism, or you can get sponsorships to cover those fees, and, and they put that out on the podcast during the live show, and it runs along the fore and after. So, you have options of doing it yourself, you know? It is $6,300 if we decided to do it and decide to go that way. Or, like I say, you can get sponsors and try to promote other things in the county, or businesses, you can, when, when they do the, the live podcast, like I say, it goes out to a lot of different places.
What, what date are you talking about again?
The only one they have left this year, and I just kind of figured this is probably too close for us to look at, would be September the 9th, especially if we.
It's just around the corner.
It's just around the corner, and if we decided to try to do this and maybe get sponsors, it's going to be close time, but then starting in January and February, they're open.
But if we were going to do it in Beck Park, that would be kind of jam.
It doesn't matter, you can, yeah, that's the thing, you can have it anywhere, we just kind of talked about Beck Park. Or the city park, the city park over there, we've got a lot of room. Has to be internet access, so then we kind of switched up, we have internet access at the city park, we don't have it at Beck Park. So, we talked about, you know, just if we decide to do something like that, it's just something that I've had different people call and ask me about, I told them I checked into it, and I checked into it, and this is what we found out. Can you all remember anything else that was, that she said? I tried to write down, there's 60 second advertising spots, you just, if you get, if you get sponsors, I think that's kind of what you promote, they get 60 second advertising spots all throughout these 59 different places that this is going out on the air to so many different people that hear it. And she just said that a lot of places go that way out, because they are wanting to promote or trying to get business or trying to get, and actually, it's probably cheaper than a lot of your advertising, because you can, you know, you can pull it in from different places and have different spots there, so.
I enjoy it, KSR, and it's, it draws a big audience, it draws a lot of people here live, but.
I'd say a lot of people.
Yeah, but I was just concerned about the weather.
Job.
If it is outside.
It don't have to be. We, we picked the spot for it, we just thought, when we were talking about it, you know, the city park would be an awesome place.
It would.
Hold up in April. Yeah, it could be any time. It's just.
Bob from Jamestown.
And then we're going to be talking about, like, if you do it maybe during a fishing tournament, during a week before that, you promote that fishing tournament coming to Jamestown, or you, you can really promote the lot stuff that would be going out over that many.
I'd say a lot of people would advertise for job boat. Thank you, boys.
If we were to do it, I think, you know, that would be the.
If we were to do it, I think, uh, given the cost of the coverage, that would be the, the way to go, in my opinion.
And that would be something we would just, because here's the thing to do. If we decide we're gonna do this, we have to give them a date and say, yes, we want this date saved because they, they're gonna book up pretty fast. If we say we're gonna go get the sponsors and we don't get them all, then we'd be liable for the rest of the money. But that's the thing.
Until when we say we are gonna get the sponsors, we need to get the sponsors.
That's right.
That needs to be an entire.
Motion, I mean, it's six, three for the city that way. I mean, if we get part of that.
Part of it, yeah.
Sixty-three hundred.
Yes, it's three thousand sponsorship, thirty-five hundred for advertising.
Wonder when, uh, basketball tournament's gonna be this year. Be in April.
Maybe in April.
Yeah.
Thirteen in April.
Six seven in April.
Or I'm gonna, sorry. They said they would say we need some March. They said they had that block there.
Oh, that's right. That's right. I forgot about that. They are, they don't do it here in March because they're going to the SEC tournament. I forgot about that, Neil.
So we'd be looking at like April.
Anytime. I mean, you can.
But before they. Or find out when one of these, uh, high school bash tournaments is.
Well, we have one of those to talk about tonight also. That tournament does.
That would be, it'd be cool like if you can do it and watch those boats. Blast off. I mean, it's pretty neat to see.
Do it in town three ways.
I mean, you could, if they don't have the hardware or internet, but I mean, to see three hundred boats blast off is pretty, is pretty neat.
Watch everybody tie their grand books, huh?
I, I guess the only thing I think, you know, it's something that we probably, if we, if we want, if we really have an interest there, we probably need to think about making the decision. And what kind of time we would wanna try to do the show and make sure we get it booked whenever we want it and have time to try to get sponsorships. If that's the route we wanna go. Just knowing that quite however much, maybe if we don't get all that, then we've still got to pay that money. So it would have to be paid. But I, I just kinda, a lot of people listen to it. A lot of people. A lot of people in this area I know listen to it all the time, but, um, I don't know. It's just a way to promote things, I guess. And then with that many people in that many different areas that it's going out to, and it's like local Lexington. Fifty-nine different podcasts. It's a lot of places. So, you know, whatever you all think. I just, they, I had different people asking about the information. So.
I had too.
We had that. So, yeah.
I'm for doing it, but I mean, I, you know, don't know a date.
Well, you know. Would we, would we, we'd be responsible for each other and find sponsors, I guess.
Yeah, but that's the route we're going. We have to try to get sponsorships to pay it because, you know. Uh, and, and one of their thoughts was too, like if you, if you did, maybe around kinda close to a, a fishing tournament or something, what about your marinas and stuff like that every time apparently? You know, because of all these boats and.
And we could even go outside the county for marinas there too. I mean, you know.
Probably long run over there. It's been something long ago. They done theirs.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, show had gone the bottom. I mean, that's, I don't know, I don't know how much, you know, push you would get. But like, if it's tourism, it's a lake. When we were up there talking about it, like Pope Run or Rafta or something like that and having the show on the lake at the marina or something like that, there's obviously limits. So, I mean, it may be something like to see the.
Right.
I don't know how well you can explain seeing these boats going by, but you know, when you're gonna be gathering around, you know, folks group, maybe not a boat.
Yeah, I'll like.
So it's options. I mean, we can pick the side and we can pick the time as long as we get a time in that they're not already booked. And that's what she said, you know, they're booked for the rest of this year except for September the ninth. So if they're booked in August for the rest of the year, we know that it's something that if we have a certain day, we probably need to make a decision pretty soon and try to get that date booked because.
Couldn't we check and about the fishing tournament, we couldn't hook up in about the same timeframe?
I don't know when they do the tournaments. I mean.
This one is.
As far as this far in advance, I don't know. They're doing them when they start advertising, but not heard any advertising on them.
I think we need, I think we need to make the commitment to say we're gonna do this and then after we've done that part, then start looking at, at dates, researching to see when would be the best time, what time of the year, whether it be spring, summer, fall or whatever. But we first got to say yes that we wanna do this.
I think it's a pretty cool thing to come to Jamestown, but, uh, I think it's a good idea if we can find something to really promote. I think we've got a lot better chance getting sponsors to do it if we've got something good to promote or something around it, you know? So, uh, maybe I, the thought of just saying if, if we decide to do it, then by try, by, at least by the end of the year, to have some dates figured out and try to at least by the first of January to get our dates booked. And then, uh, we need to think about too, if we book a date, how much time do we have to get sponsors? We need, need to book a date and have plenty of time there to get our sponsors together.
Right.
We found out what a, a spot cost for a sponsor.
I think it can be whatever the year donations are. As long as you get the sixty-three hundred dollars paid, then they're gonna promote all during that time that they're on there for three hours. Then they're gonna do live for so many days after and a week before. So you're getting quite a bit of advertising actually with it going out that far.
I'm for it.
I make a motion that we go forward with KSR and make a decision at a later date of what time we got, we want to book it for next year.
And we're gonna try to go the route of trying to get sponsors, people. They got a motion by Aida?
I expect it.
Gonna stake it by Terry. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, please.
If we can find out from the school when they, don't they normally do their tournaments during the spring? Or the fishing tournaments?
Oh, the fishing tournaments.
Yeah.
I think, I, I think they do. I think the one from the school does because this one.
There is spring sport. There's spring sport.
Yeah.
And they like fish all year, but.
So that's something that we would wanna like get back with in, in December to set our date.
Yeah.
So then that would give us time.
Yeah, we need to decide what kind of time and what we're gonna try to, what we feel like we'll have plenty of options of getting sponsors.
Those school turn, tournaments like that, they have so many to qualify and then they go somewhere else like the teams that win in Kentucky.
Yeah, I think so.
They, I, I know a lady at my work, her son got to go to the, for the chances or whatever, had another, but it was in another state. But they qualify, school tournament cheerleaders, so many kids, you know? So they probably have more than one.
Okay, so I think just from this point, we probably need to try thinking about what we're gonna promote and what we're gonna, what time we wanna look at. And then we'll need to, uh, get with them and then start working on our donations. Okay, good, everybody?
Sounds good.
Okay, next thing is movie night. Movie night in Jamestown. I think everybody's kinda anxious for movie night to start back. And, um.
We had said we would bring it back up in September, so September is.
It's here.
It's here.
So we need to kinda decide what we, what we wanna look at, I think. If I'm wrong, correct me, but I almost think that we decided to go to every other Friday night instead of every Friday night. Is that the discussion we had?
I probably should have just started making.
Just because of it, yeah, being, uh, instead of being every Friday night and you've got ball bangs and stuff going on too.
What's ball bangs?
How many you gonna try to do?
You mean how many months?
How many, how many nights? I mean, you know, so if you start there, you're gonna run September and October is about when we do it. So we're gonna start like the sixteenth and do the sixteenth, thirtieth, fourteenth and then I don't know, I might have to look at the calendar. I looked at the sixth, I mean, sixteen, twenty-third, thirtieth, seventh and fourteenth is the days that were down there just looking at the calendar. But if you go every other day, then every other Friday, the sixteenth, thirtieth, fourteenth and then the Friday after the fourteenth.
Now, what's first time?
It's a little late in the year before King's weather starts getting.
Yeah, that's what.
Well, that gets into truck or treat. We were discussing on, you know, Halloween on the square. So maybe that's.
The second of September, the ninth of September, sixteen, twenty-four and thirtieth is all Fridays in September. So if you do every other week, you've either gotta look at the second, the sixteenth, the ninth and the twenty-third or the sixteenth and the thirtieth.
And the second starts Labor Day weekend. That's the kickoff of Labor Day weekend. So.
Yeah. Ziva, you want to buy weekend after the whistle voting?
No. I don't agree with him.
What about the ninth and the twenty-third? I mean, it's just dates I'm seeing that the second is Labor Day weekend. The sixteenth and thirtieth, you're getting to the end of the month and then like you say, you're getting, if you go from there, then you've got the fourteenth and twenty-eighth and that's Halloween really.
Yeah, and no.
Twenty-eighth will get pretty late.
Yeah.
Weather's getting pretty cool.
It's kinda chilly.
And then even, even starting in September, it's gonna get pretty late into the night.
Yeah.
Before it gets starting up to sea.
Yeah.
If we do two months and we do the ninth and the twenty-third of September, then we would pick back up on the seventh and twenty-first of October. Or if you all feel like we need to do it two weeks in a row and then, I mean, I don't.
You mean in October, maybe do two weeks straight?
Or, yeah, or the whole time, you know, do two weeks in a row. I don't know. I'm just throwing things out there for everybody. What you think would be the best option?
I didn't bring mine either, so it's hard for me to look at that and visualize it.
If you wanna do three or four, I mean, I think, I think you're gonna skip, skip the sixteenth, the thirtieth and the fourteenth. If you're gonna skip one, if you're not, then I'm like them, do seventh and the fourteenth of, uh, October. And you maybe would skip the twenty-third to the, or start the twenty-third, do the, and do four back to back.
If we do four, we'd have to start the nine, ninth and.
I, I wouldn't even start that early. I would do, I wouldn't start till the sixteenth.
So you say do the sixteenth.
And the thirtieth.
And the thirtieth.
And then either do, do two weeks back to back on the seventh and the fourteenth or just.
Of October.
Just do, yeah, or just do the fourteenth of October.
I say just do the fourteenth of October and then, cause two weeks later, we're gonna be doing Halloween on the square. So one in October would be pretty much all we'd need, wouldn't it? With us having that event at the end of October.
Do sixteen, thirtieth, fourteenth and then run. We can still run the movie the night of.
Uh, yeah.
I can still do that.
Whatever it's called.
We normally play the church.
Hocus Pocus. I couldn't remember.
We, we always run something that or.
Yeah.
Chopping ground or something, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that would be good.
So I'll start the sixteen instead of the ninth?
Sounds good.
I think so. I think it's gonna, at least it gives a little bit, uh, dark enough, just a little. I know it's gonna take, it'll be pretty late in sixteen. I mean, it's late now to get dark enough to see a movie.
Okay, so we're gonna look at nine sixteen. Nine thirty.
Yeah.
And then do we flip over to October on the fourteenth? So we're gonna skip the week of the seventh, do the fourteen and then we'll do Trump.
Trump.
That good with everybody?
What dates in October?
Uh, the seventh and the four, I'm sorry, the fourteenth, just.
Seven.
No, October seventh, Terry, just the fourteenth in October. We're just gonna do October fourteenth.
August.
Yeah, we've got two in September.
Yeah.
And then October fourteenth, and then two weeks later, we'll do Trump, we'll do Halloween on the square with, uh, Halloween.
I'll crank it up for you.
I think we should do an adult night, maybe.
Yeah.
You know, we should always make adult movies sometimes. I think adults can watch. I don't think, I'd be in ready.
We couldn't get enough pizza here.
And no steak.
You're saying it's all movie.
That didn't sound right. No steak, it's just pizza.
Sixteen, the thirtieth, two and October fourteenth.
Alright, sounds good.
I'm thirty, yeah. You're trying to do, I can do another movie.
We don't have to motion this, did we? Because we knew we were gonna do it.
Right.
We were just getting our date.
I would like to have somebody pick, I mean, if, pick the movies.
Debbie, so, I mean, Debbie, I think that's right up your alley. You'll, you'll pick the movies, won't you?
I'll do it.
See, there we go.
But now they don't watch them out here.
That doesn't matter. And we just thank Tyler very much for the use of his projector because I know that is a personal, uh.
Are we getting sponsors to sponsor for the nights? Maybe I'll look to get them that too.
I think there's people that want to sponsor.
I, I.
I've had one. I already said they would.
Yeah, I've had, I've had one that wants to, but I don't know. It's just as long as we, you know, can get it, get it there. And I don't know what they're, what they're expecting out of sponsorship, you know, like when others.
Social media promotion.
Yeah, we did that and they have signed up. But like, I, I know they used to always do it. It was just we kinda got away from it because it was chasing the money.
Yeah. Well, and you gotta get the fees anyway and then when they're starting it, so it just.
That would just be something we can, I mean, then work it out before you decide who to get the sponsors. Nobody asks to sponsor and I don't think we should turn nobody down. Nobody asks the sponsor. Okay. Tyler, you got, um, our sanitation ordinance?
Yeah, we need to amend the sanitation ordinance. Um, just like everything else, prices went up. We're actually, uh, we ate one. It's went up twice. Actually, we ate the first one and this time it's, we'll imagine do something where it's passing on. But I mean, this is on y'all. I can read it and y'all can discuss it. Uh, this is, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-two zero zero three. It's an order to amending. The last time we raised this was twenty seventeen zero zero nine. Um, the charge collection disposal of garbage hereby established at fourteen dollars per month, each family, each residence. Each apartment residence and each apartment within the residence should constitute a separate family and should be billed regardless of what water or sewer services are being used. All house residents within the city limits should be charged a rate of fourteen dollars a month. Residents who live outside the city limits, whom the city provides garbage collection, should be charged eighteen dollars a month. And that's a maximum of three thirty gallon bags to be picked up. This order should be in full force of effect, uh, after publication in November, actually November first. And I was thinking that that's something we can look at too because that gives us time to get it on the bill and get it processed. You know? We could probably do it in October, but I think with it going on bills, November is probably the, the new fastest.
And that's just passing on the charges that Morgan has raised, the prices to the city.
Yeah.
So. What kind of, any discussion on what y'all think about that?
That's nothing new. Things going up.
I mean, everybody's electric. I mean, all the utilities have went up across the board. And if you ask someone that has Morgan sanitation outside of the city in the county, they're paying that already. So it's not any different than what.
Well, I'm the first to say, you know, you hate to raise stuff on anybody that went and raised to us.
We'll just break even then.
We'll be, we'll be, they've raised two dollars without us raising and that's what we're, we're never.
That's what we went through then.
We're not trying to profit off of it.
No, we're, no.
It's exactly the way it started when we, when we started the.
You know, I'm very surprised. The way you fuel and maintenance and everything.
Well, if, if it's, if they pick it up. Well, if, if it's, if they pick it up, and it's not from the city, it's a little more than that anyway. I mean, just people who are residential people that just go through them anyway, I mean, it's.
Do we need a motion on that?
No, it's just a first reading.
It's a first reading.
Oh, I see.
Second thing is our water tap ordinance?
We actually talked about this, uh, I don't know, it's been several months back, that we're, we had always charged, we had a set price of six seventy-five rent, you know, on water tap. Um, that, like everything else, it's going up, we're actually on outside city, we're, we're losing money on, on doing the water tap. Um, there's different ways to do it, um, we looked at this, easiest way, just make tap to actual cost, whatever, you know, we can check them once a month, or, you know, and see, and get a, get a price when they come in, and be able to at least give them something, know what, know what it's gonna cost them. Um, I, we had to go up last time, this was amended in twenty seventeen, again, the same as the sanitation, when we went up last time. We kept our regular three-quarter inch taps, our household taps, at, at three, at six seventy-five a buck. We went up on a, actual cost on anything bigger than that because of brass and everything, and all the fittings were just out of the road then, and they're completely out of the road now, and you can't even find parts. We're hunting centers right now, we're gonna wait in those for taps that we don't have, we don't have parts for right now. So, I mean, I, I'm assuming that these prices are gonna keep going up, that's kind of something, I think it's probably the safest way for us to not lose money when you're, when you're running out doing, doing a tap.
We're going to the same, I mean, we're, you can't, you better watch how you price something, or if you order something, things we can get in two weeks, now you're talking four months, and like I was saying, you know, it's everywhere, really.
Which is actual cost, it makes sense that.
Doesn't, I mean, I think it's the safest way to do it. I mean, a lot of, a lot of places, we're cheap, I mean, a lot of places are, they don't charge like what it costs to make the tap, they, they charge as a, we're providing you a service, we're allowing you to tap into their line, and that'd be fifteen hundred dollars. But it's not just for the parts and service, you know, and us doing it, but it's the, the pressure that puts on the line, and split the line, you know, we have to go right back out and maintain it, that are using water off our system, which we're building for. But it's just, uh, a lot, a lot of places don't do it the way we do it, um, you know, it, it's actually for tapping into the line. But, I mean, this is, we're not gonna lose money this way, I mean, it's our way to make money, but we weren't making it before. It was just kind of a, you know, we, we done the tab and making money off of the service.
Good move.
Well, we ought to at least get a month, I mean, you know, we should at least get what it cost us, so we're not losing money.
Yeah.
There ain't no future to losing money. I mean, I don't care what.
Well, actually, if we stick with that, we're gonna tell them whatever it costs, right?
Yeah.
If it goes up in six months, we'll have to go up.
Yeah, that, that, that's a way to keep us, keep us there, we can, we can check it, you know, like I said, I don't know that you wanna check it after two weeks, but we could, if it gets down to that, you know, I mean, if something starts happening, we can check it as often as we want, every tab.
I'd say we're losing some money on every tap we might have made.
I, I would say something, if you put fuel costs and, and stuff, everything in on it, wear and tear on equipment, I, I, yeah, we're probably, we're probably just.
Okay.
I need to read this. This is twenty twenty-two zero zero forward, orders amending ordinance twenty seventeen zero seven, water user tap fees. City of James, Kentucky has instructed a water production treatment and distribution system, whereas the city intends to establish proportionate user charges that place the cost supply on users inside and outside the city limits, James Town will provide portable water and maintain financial self-sufficiency, whereas the city must pay the O M, O M dollar distribution debt service expenses associated with said system accordingly. Now, therefore ordained by the city, uh, city council and city of James, Kentucky, the following connection fees are established. The water taps, regular three-quarter and, and one inch or bigger, every tap will now be actual cost inside or out. The ordinance shall become full force effect, this is, this is another, I mean, Debbie talked about this, this one actually can go probably October first, if that's what you, I, I've got on there November, but this one has nothing to do with like billing, it's just, they, so we, we can, we can. It'll publish, uh.
It'll be effective October first.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Any questions on that?
It'll be effective the next.
It'll be publication as well, so it'll run, it'll run the end of September, pretty much now I get it published, so October first is about to be the quickest I'm doing.
Nine one one inter local agreement.
Something like.
Yeah.
This is the, it's just the annual nine one one agreement, um, I'm not gonna read all this, it's the same thing we do every year, um. We're funding dispatch, um, each, each entity, uh, you know, helps pay for this, City of Russell Springs, City of James Town, the ambulance board, um, and the fiscal court, I think, is, is in.
Yes.
And with the rest, actually, the rest, it says will be provided by the, the fiscal court. Us, uh, Russell Springs, James Town, are, we paid thirty-five thousand, it went up last year, but this is the exact same thing we paid last year. Just need a motion, second, uh.
I'm gonna hand to that.
Motion made.
Second.
Third.
I missed it, I got the first, I don't know if I can get the second.
We, we.
There you go. Call in favor.
Uh.
The opposed. Um, next is our inter local road agreement.
This is the, it's the same thing we do every year, it's an annual road agreement, I'm not sure what it does, but. It allows us to work together with the, with the county, um, on, the city and county should both cooperate in maintenance, repair, paving, and creation of road within the city limits, uh, within the city of James Town, except the Ro- Ross County Road A Fund, uh, if you go into this, this agreement. So it's the same thing we do every year.
With the county on the roads, basically.
The road inside the city.
Yeah.
Yes.
Make a motion. Motion made.
Call in favor, uh, give me a post.
All right.
Uh, next is our annual ABC regulatory ordinance.
This is a, this is a new ordinance for us, um, it's basically just stating that we're, we, we're gonna stay at five percent. It normally comes with an income statement and everything, but we, we've just now took this over, so I don't have anything to go with it. Um, next year, when we, when we read this, the same thing, um, it, it will have a income statement to show revenues and expenses, you know, that was, go company going out of the camp. Uh, so we're just to establish regulatory license fee for the sale of alcohol beverages in the city of James Town for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The city of James Town, Kentucky is authorized to impose regulatory fee on the sale of alcohol beverages, east establishment therein, license to sell alcohol beverages pursuant to carrier S two four three oh seven five, and the city of James Town orders twenty twenty-one zero zero six. Whereas the city has reviewed regulatory license fee from the prior fiscal year, which all we have to go on is two months, as well as expenses related to additional policing, regulatory, and administrative expenses related to the sale of alcohol beverages in the city. Whereas the city files the current regulatory fees are reasonably estimated to somewhat reimburse the city for additional policing, regulatory, and administrative expenses related to the sale of alcohol beverages in the city. Now therefore, reader name of the city council, city of James Town, Kentucky is follows. The regulatory license fee shall be at five percent of gross sales of all alcohol beverages sold by the drink. In the case of retail sales of packages, sales spirits applying the regulatory fees shall be at five percent of gross sales. The regulatory license fee should be at five percent of gross sales on all packaged malt beverages. If any section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or any portion of this ordinance for any reason declared illegal, or unconstitutional, or otherwise invalid, such decrees shall not affect the remaining portions hereon. If any provisions of this ordinance is in conflict with provisions of existing ordinance or laws, it's in the intent of the city council, city of James Town, Kentucky, that the provisions of this ordinance shall govern and such provisions in existing ordinances or laws in conflict herewith and hereby presented. That's just the first reading, so.
Okay. Next, we're gonna drop out of our business, and we're gonna talk about Seaworld return. So Tyler's got, I think, all the new costs.
This, uh, we had the bids come back in again yesterday, I said, this is something that's been going on forever, we rebid it twice. It's no better, uh, the, the open bid came in, Wado Enterprises, it was tied at seventy-three thousand five oh five. If you add engineering inspection cost to that, total project cost to get this, to get Seaworld's room with three five hundred three inch line, uh, it's got a oil valve, a gate valve in it, eighty-three thousand five hundred five hundred is what the total project cost is gonna be.
Would, did they give a, take, they could begin work?
He, he talked like he's ready, he said as long as, he thought that he could get, he thought he could get three inch, uh, S D R seventeen, he, he had somebody heading on involved right now that actually was holding for this from, because they knew this bid was coming out. Um, the only thing, I think he needed a, a, uh, three inch tap and sleeve, but he thought he had one in his yard, uh, Eric did. So he talked like, you know, as, as long as he can get material, he's, he's ready, he, he's actually got somebody that lives here that they never got to work it on, it's pretty tickle, man.
And that's the one?
That was it, seventy-three five oh five, eight one three sixty-four, eighty-four eight twelve, that's the three.
The county's gonna pay half of that?
And we bid this twice, well, we've got a, a deal working with the county, I think that we can, that we can get this right now. I think we have a deal working that we can get this right now. Excitingly.
Do we need a motion to accept the bid?
Yes. Make a motion, accept the bid.
Got a motion. Got a second, I ain't that tall, thank her.
Uh.
Any opposed? All righty, Seaworld turn twelve.
We'll, Russell's out here or something, we'll get started. It's, uh, like I said, I think he should have an S D R seventeen, it shouldn't be a problem to get, um, I'll, I'll get with the engineers, I'll actually send them a message or not, he'll send a notice of awards to Wado Enterprises for the bid, and once they start that, they can work the parts, and it's on them, and as fast as we can get it done. It says in there, it's, and I'd have to go back and look at the plans, the bid, the bids, the middle package has a, it's, it shouldn't take long to get.
What was the bid, Tyler?
Eight, uh, seventy-three five oh five was the bid. Yeah, but total project cost is eighty-three five oh five.
Does that cover everybody's meter out there, or does everybody need to go purchase one?
They'll, I, they'll have to get a meter, the two, I'll have to move two, because they've already got two at the end of the road. I'll have to move those two, that'll be involved in it, but you'll have to have tap fees for those, just come in and get a, I don't know if you've done that or not.
Would you not wanna do that before they go up?
Well, and that one is a, um, yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna, you've waited so time, you don't want water now, so. That is, um, let's put you on this, I, like I said, we're about ten, ten or eleven behind right now.
At least.
We did get some new centers in, I think I've got enough to do seven right now, um.
I think you got fifteen centers in.
Did you get all fifteen in?
Yeah, fifteen.
Okay, so that, without the new ones, and that's a different couple, no, from Steve. Um, so we should, we should have it, with, with getting set, Russell, they get the line laid, and get it priced, tested, sanitized.
So how much charge is tap fee now? How much charge are fees now?
Six seventy, six, six seventy-five and a, and a fifty dollar meter, probably.
Okay.
That's right.
Now, before I.
Yeah, there's actual, there's new going in.
Yeah, just, you know, I, I, if we've got fifteen tasks, we should have enough, or fifteen centers, we should have enough to get through right now, so. I mean, I think the way the plan's drawn up, I mean, there's two more, right?
Should be four that you'll need, there's two already there.
Yeah, four total, that's what the plan should, yeah, that's what I thought, and then we'll move the other two down to the houses right from.
Yeah.
Good deal.
So Russell says we can get started, it shouldn't be a long process, it's thirty-five hundred three inches, they laid it in the ditch, all the problem you're gonna get to is a big, there's a big tree in the, in the curve right there.
Well, you know, there's a way around that, let me tell you my opinion on that. You go down that side of the road, and before you get to the tree, you cross over to the other side.
We, we're actually looking at that better than.
Then instead of going around the curve, around that mobile home, just go straight up along that fence line, you'll out cheap with long, be less.
If we get the, I think we got two, if you do it, I can't even remember what the plan showed, but if you cross that road, you're gonna have two road, you're gonna have two driveway, we'll try, is there two driveways on the right end side going down?
Yeah, but you're going down past them on the.
Before you get to the tree?
Before you get to the tree.
They were looking at that as a, the, in their black shop, where the, where the barn is out there now? Yeah, because they looked at that anyway, the, they shone a dent in them out, they tried to.
Well, it's right there, that road always holds water, and it rains a lot of humans, so if you just go right into there, go help that lady, go over there. And then go down, and instead of going around that circle, just go right, right there, and the fence goes all the way down to it, just go right stop it, it's a long one.
They is.
In other words, what she's saying, she's got a ten foot right away from the side of the road.
Counting the right away, or, or you've got.
She's got, she's got the.
Right away all the way, you don't have ten foot.
Okay.
So she's, she's offering, uh, her right away.
That lady wants one?
I would want, it's just too far back to you.
You shouldn't have to.
Well, you should have, I'm gonna say, I mean, I don't know, like I said, I don't wanna take them, but.
I mean, you need me to go out there and supervise my wheel?
They would have, they would have to inspect it, that's our ten thousand dollars worth of inspection.
And they'll all stand there and say, I get it all down. And it's hard to predict weather.
I, I don't, do you remember what the bid said then? I'm gonna say the bid probably states probably thirty to forty-five days, I don't see it taking that long. I had a guy tell me you can do it two weeks, and, and that wouldn't work, that was, that was a night and weekend guy. So, you know, as long as they don't run into any rock, which they, they broke it, they don't think they're going to. So it shouldn't take, it should lessen them on, I would think, once they get started, they should lay thirty-five.
You're certainly not close to me, look.
Yeah.
Thank you. Water for a credit.
We're all gonna be your house, that's fine with us.
Good deal. Thanks you all, thank you for your patience, thanks for coming out. I told you it's gonna be a long.
That's all right. See y'all.
See you.
Okay, uh, last thing we have on the oldies is the, um, Bradley Roy cover craft fishing tournament. And this is something I think, Debbie helped me, that we've done in the past. This is the big tournament with all the, did we do, was it called Bradley Roy last year?
Yeah, I can't remember what it was called, we done, we done.
We've done a lot of fishing.
Yeah, we've done, we, we sponsored a lot of fishing, I don't even remember which one, which, we've actually done some of, like, USA, USA Cares.
It wasn't Bradley Roy, different name, boy.
He was Kai Two, something, but the USA Cares. The USA Cares was the big one, you know, um.
That was that huge one out there? So is this not the same?
Going out of how? I'm, I'm.
How's it landing?
I'm honestly not, I'm not sure.
From him, he said, is the one that we sponsored before.
We did, we have sponsored it, yes, is it, it is the hospital tournament?
Uh, this is just a, I don't think it's high school, is it?
Yeah, twenty twenty-two national championship, so it, it's high school.
Oh, yeah, high school national championship.
So the, the other one was actually a two, it was a, it was a, uh.
It was two days?
It was a three day.
Three day?
Yeah, it was a Friday, Saturday, Friday and Saturday was a, um, college series, and Sunday was, was a, um, high school.
Yeah.
Did you say when he's asking for it, for a minute?
I haven't got it.
He just said, uh, that, well, they were just asking for what, what it sponsored before.
But we don't know what that was, because we don't know which one this is?
Was it five?
I'm thinking it was five, that was last time we did it.
I think it was, yeah, I think it was five. This is a Baptist Nation tournament, top two teams. Top two teams trying to enter into the two thousand twenty-three high school national championship.
Is it twenty-three national championship or twenty-twenty? This says twenty-twenty-two. This must be last year, probably.
Well, it's held October twenty-second. That's when the tournament's going to be, October the twenty-second.
Yeah.
I mean, October the eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, it's, and, and the two teams will be the two thousand twenty-three high school national championship.
Yeah. That's just the date.
That says twenty-twenty-three. Well, it, hers says twenty-three. I don't know what, but that's why, yeah.
And maybe they just made a correction. So will Russell County?
I must say, they were in last time. I remember like five, they had like five meetings.
See, this is what I was talking about, potentially sponsoring with KSR. I think they did it in spring.
I like that, yeah.
They do.
When's that being?
I can't remember. I don't know. It was cool. Cause I went down there. I worked, so. I worked two mornings of that down there at like four o'clock in the morning.
My sixth morning?
Scattered down. No, but it's all high schools, it's hard. Because that one was a college series. And then the high school, the high school, they, they finished that Sunday, but I, we didn't work on Sunday. I worked it Friday, Friday and Saturday. You had to separate votes. It was backed up. I don't see any votes more.
We can get more information on it. This is just something he's sent and he's called a few times and, um, I guess they need to know some who he's sending though, because this is October.
Yeah.
Yes, we can't handle Bradley Roy cover craft high school open.
I guess we'll have one more meeting before that. I don't know what.
I don't know what the money has to be in, because October eighth is the time.
His dad, I'm a boat player, right? For next. Yeah. His dad is a daughter of a very good servant. His dad, uh, Bradley's grandfather, father, brother, preacher.
She's having.
That's his grandmother. Anthony is his daddy.
Um, I texted.
You know, you know, my married body, which is Bradley's grandmother.
Yes, they are. Russell County is.
Is participating in this?
The Bradley Roy.
Okay.
It says high school open, I mean, it's open, open tournament.
So this is Paul and Jackie's. This is Anthony and Jackie's?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's her son, Bradley. He's, he's a professional fisher.
Yeah, he's one.
Yeah, he's, yeah.
Is his mom a practitioner or a doctor?
That's it. Bonnie, his grandmother was a dental assistant at, at Henry's for everyone.
Yeah, Bonnie, yeah. See, my brother married him after his wife died. My oldest brother, Mike.
They need times sponsors. There's all kinds of sponsors.
That's what I don't know, like I.
Yeah.
Without, without him being able to tell me exactly what we work the check for, I can't go back. I could probably find it, but I'm thinking, I'm thinking five thousand dollars. I don't know whether we should need a motion for that. And if it's less than that, then that's what we do. It's what we done last year.
Up to.
Cause I ain't mad with it last year. Up, up to. I mean, if you want to do up to something, I mean, cause it may, it may have been more than that. I don't know. We done one that was bigger than that.
A lot bigger.
Yeah, we done, we done.
You're choking on five thousand.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking that what we done, we paired with the, um, the big tournament, we paired with, and we, that was just that part. We paired with the Mar, either the Marina, the State Dock, one of those two plus, um, jury. Did he want?
That was a big.
And it was the big one. Yeah, that was the cares thing.
I believe he told me five, but I'm not sure. I, I'll check.
That sounds right to me. I, I'm not sure about that, but.
I can't remember. Lord, that's a bad record.
I mean, if, if.
If it's different, then we can find out. We don't want to make a decision of what to do tonight that way because then we need the money pretty quick and we may not want to have to wait or have a special call meeting just to do that, so.
Do what we, you know, what you've done in the past, if that's all right.
Is that your motion?
Well, I. Bear our goal again.
My motion terrible. Are you going to say up to a certain, we don't know.
I mean, if you're, if you're willing to get five thousand, you can make a motion up to five thousand. Same as what we done last year, up to five. I'm making a motion.
Okay. Got a second.
Paul Thager?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, real quick, this is just something, uh, I want to say, uh, something about Jeff and what he did with all this police officer Monday night when he did the school. Jeff, you want to talk a little bit about that? They, I mean, such a good turnout and something so important to, I think.
Yeah, we've had several meetings with the school system here in the last month, two or three months leading up to this school year. And the shooting that took place in Texas has really, um, prompted a lot of this. We were fortunate, um, last year, we hired Jamie Rogers down to school as our school resource officer with the four entities going together. The city and the county and everybody that went together with that. We've got several officers that probably had never set foot in that school. Um, I had been in there, uh, Lee Smith had been in there, but, uh, some of the other officers had never even went in there and they were the ins and outs of that school and what. So it was something that we had planned and we just had never got to it. So I guess with all the meetings that we'd been having leading up to the school year that we had to take place yesterday, we just made a date and went in there and just did a walkthrough and, um, so we'll know what. End protocol. We went over the protocol, everyone, what would happen in case something ever happened. Let's hope it never does. And that, that we have a situation like what they had in Texas. That town apparently was of the Miriam of Jamestown, a very small town. Uh, you know, very limited resources of officers. They did come from other places, which I know what happened here. But, yeah, we just got in there and did a, did a walkthrough, just showing what the ins and outs of that school is. And, you know, it's, it's a lot bigger and there's a lot to it.
It is.
But here, it was with us. She, she came and walked through with it. There's a lot more to it. I think Tony's been involved in it too, who's in the fire department. There is a lot more to that school, in, inside, looks and crannies up in the top, everything, so.
To me, it was just amazing to see that all the officers now, not that we have one that works knives that hadn't been in the school. But if somebody, Jeff went over or called with all the officers, who your contact person is, if an emergency happens, everybody knows who the contact.
That's awesome.
Everybody knows now where the doors are and where the exits are and, and what's going on and what the school does if there is an emergency like this. So I thought it was very good. Thank you for getting it together. I might regret it and I, I just appreciate it for, for Debbie.
Jamestown family. Doesn't do it, really.
I have something.
Anybody, any, oh, just real quick, I'm going to just, I have talked to Mike Whittaker. We've been back and forth, Mike Whittaker, one is the Hardee's building. He's out of town. I had a meeting scheduled with him when he gets back, so, uh, we're going to discuss the Hardee's building and what's going on there, what maybe we can get going on or. But anyway, he, he wants to sit down and talk and so he's just supposed to get in touch with me when he gets back from out of town. And hopefully something good will come out of that, so we are going to at least get together and talk about it.
Perfect.
Last Friday night was back to school bash at Fairgrounds. And that is where Kevin's kids' money starts the play for the school year. It was phenomenal. Debbie and Regina and myself, we handed out over eight hundred pencil pouches because that was what we, the city of Jamestown was assigned pencil pouches. And it was an awesome thing to have been involved in. To see those kids come around with their card. There was twenty-five stations. You marked off, we were station number four. You would mark off the station when they handed you their card and you would give them, we gave them a pencil pouch. And it was just very humbling, a blessing to have been involved in.
What else? Backpacks were really cool.
They, they were.
They were, you know, they, human resource, they first start back, get them a backpack and they filled it up as they went. These kids had a whole, so they did that when my child was little. Okay, we do need to go into an executive session per KRS six-one dot eight one oh about litigation.
Make motion to go into, take a decision.
Right there.
Paul Thager?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Come on, there we go.
No, actually, we're taking an executive session. So I need a motion to adjourn for the night.
Motion, right, say.
Paul Thager?
Aye.
Paul, any opposed?
It didn't work for you, it's not.